Called a meeting to order at 5:30. Before we move forward, we have two new members of the commission. And I'd like for them to introduce themselves and say a few words. That's Mr. Amos Stolfoos and Mr. Porter Stephens.
Thank you, Chairman. Hi, everyone. My name is Amos Stolfoos. I've been an alternate member of the Planning Commission for a few months. And now moving to a full Planning Commission member, I guess. I live in the Southwest, love Lancaster City, and excited to be part of its future development. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. All right, got the microphone to work on the first try. All right. My name is Porter Stephens, newly mentored alternate member. Really excited to be here on this, on this commission and to really start digging into the city of Lancaster, especially the comp plan. I'm actually a professional planner, been a professional planner for eight years. But interestingly, this is the first time I've been on this side of the, of the dais. So I'll be interested to learn, get some experience as a planning commission member. I certainly look forward to serving on this body. So thank you.
Thank you, and welcome. The approval of the minutes of the meeting of June the 21st, 2023 meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for June 21st, 2023.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and also a second for the minutes of June 2021, 23. All in favor, let it known by saying aye.
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 Oppose? Eyes have it, motion carry. Number three, subdivision and land development, A section 265-28 foundation permit.
Mr. Chairman, last planning commission meeting, the commission has approved the land development plan for 640 Franklin Street. And tonight we have a request for foundation permit only to, you know, to accommodate students program in the coming fall. Invite ELA to present the request.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kyle Grindstaff with ELA Group. Like Mandali said, we are here tonight looking to request a modification of the foundation permit. We are requesting this permit for the semi attached units to be issued ahead of the recording of the final land development plan. Just some quick refresher for everybody here. All the technical comments on the final land development plans have been addressed. The only remaining items are just finalizing some agreements and posting the financial security. Like Mandali said, each year the Thaddeus students build these duplexes. And it is a part of their curriculum. And allowing the foundation permit to be issued would help facilitate the installation of the semi attached units and keep the program within schedule. We are looking to start construction in middle August, and this would help get us to that goal. And I do believe the students start school on August 22nd, so time is fast approaching us. And like I said, this would fast track us and help us get this foundation into the ground. For the sake of time, I'll open up the floor to everybody here.
Mr. Chairman, city staff would like to recommend approving the request.
Any public comment? Hearing none. I hear have a motion.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. Sorry about the suspense there. I do make a motion that the Plan Commission honor the request for this modification for a permit, foundation permit prior to the recording of 640 South Franklin Streets final land development plans.
I would second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, let it known by saying aye.
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 Oppose? Hearing none. Eyes have it, motion carry. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Number four, redevelopment authority of the city of Lancaster.
Are you ready for me, Chairman?
Yeah, okay. The comprehensive plan presentation.
Good evening, everyone. This is an exciting, an exciting moment for us. This is our first discussion with, with the Planning Commission on the comprehensive plan. And it's an important step towards this body actually providing a formal recommendation to city council for action on, on this item. So many local governments do struggle to get residents excited about policy plans like this. But Lancaster has once again provided to be the exception. And we had nearly 300 people attend our meeting on May 24th to provide a preview of these materials. So this evening, what I want to do for, for you all is to provide that presentation again to set a good baseline of, of information for this commission before we move into actually reviewing the full plan. The intention at this point is to provide that full draft plan at the next planning commission meeting on August 2nd. So with that, hopefully we, we are nearly done with this slide. But just to make sure we're all on the same page here, what is a comp plan? So above all else, it's a community vision for the future. And this is why it's been so vital that we spent two years engaging with stakeholders across the city. The comp plan is the foundational document that guides physical growth and development over the next 20 years. And it carries legislative weight as it is ultimately adopted by city council. In other jurisdictions, they call these by different names. It might be a general plan, sometimes a master plan, but all of them set general, general policy for the city government and community and institutions. You can think of the comp plan as the top of the pyramid. So the, the image that's on the right of the slide here shows just in a conceptual diagram of a family of plans beneath that. So under the comp plan, you might have things like a capital improvement project plan or a small area plan. Active transportation plan would be another example. Comp plans usually have written policies and maybe citywide in scale, but also have place based recommendations. And I think we'll, oh, and some of the classic tools for implementing them are things like zoning codes, capital improvement plans, and also of course discussions with the community factor into all of that. So this is particularly historic moment in our planning history because we've only had four comprehensive plans up until this point. 1929, 1945, 1993, and then a multi municipal plan that was adopted in 2007. So this would be the fifth comprehensive plan for the city over roughly the last hundred years. So Lancaster has clearly changed a lot since these plans were done. And one, you know, we intend to chart a new path that will guide our work for at least the next 10 years, but you know, with a longer term vision. The comprehensive plan has actually set a new precedent for community engagement in the city. We've had over 14,000 interactions over the last two years. I think this is closer to 15,000 now. And we've been talking to people on the street, at community events and public meetings, high school football games, outside Central Market, outside McDonald's, in school classrooms, at senior centers. outside McDonald's, in school classrooms, at senior centers, on your social media, and in so many other places. We've also engaged residents in six different languages, much of that to the thanks of Church World Service. And many of them were refugees and new Americans. So now I'd like to provide some quick thank yous to a variety of people. And there's really not enough time to thank all of the folks who have participated in this process up until now. But certainly, I want to thank our primary funding partners, and those do include some local institutions, the Free Foundation and the High Foundation. The comprehensive plan committee was a committee that was working prior to it all getting to you. And these were residents who spent two years advising us on the outreach process and reviewing materials that we were developing and made an immense commitment to this process. So I think they've delivered to you a really solid process. Our technical advisory committees actually were composed of about 150 local experts. Sorry, could you go back? There we go. 150 local experts, they met four times over the last couple of years to advise on working up to this policy that we've developed. Of course, city staff, and last but far from least, the Lancaster City community and the thousands of people who have participated so far. So I'd like to, before we get into specifics, maybe talk about some of the big-picture trends that are driving change. And this presentation tonight is not intended to be a full presentation on existing conditions and demographic changes. We had done that actually with the Planning Commission in the past. We did issue a Lancaster Today report about a year ago. We continue to update that as new information becomes available. But we've had more than two years of input from residents and a great deal of analysis. And I think the big question is, so what? What does all of that tell us, and what have we learned, and what are people experiencing? And fortunately, a lot of what we've experienced on the ground is backed up by numbers as well. So at the highest level, there are some key trends that are worth noting in Lancaster. Sorry, just go ahead and stand on that slide. Thank you. First, population growth is anticipated in both the county and the city. Right now, we have, is it 1,500 units that are approved, Mendali, in the city right now? I think we have 1,500 residential units that are approved as land developments. 500 are actually under construction right now, which is an amazing trajectory for the city of Lancaster. Second, housing cost burden is rising across many income levels. And more than a third of our, actually closer to half of our city, is housing burden. Third, there is an increase in demand for housing that serves smaller households. So that's one of our fastest-growing demographics, is single-family, single-person households. Fourth, revolutions in technology are reshaping the workplace with many implications for commercial office, space, and job types. Fifth, climate change is present and accelerating. And this year has been notable on that front, from drought to rain to smoke from wildfires in Alberta, Canada. Six, different forms of mobility are evolving and are likely to change the way that people get around. And also, you may have read in the local paper on Sunday that many people are commuting further while others are working home more often. And maybe you recognize Porter from that article. A great example. Thank you for contributing to that. And perhaps most importantly, there's a growing emphasis, and necessarily so, on equity and in sharing the benefits and the responsibilities of success across our community. So these are the trends that we can consider as the backdrops to the policies and forces driving change. So with these trends in mind, we crafted over 100 citywide policies and 50 citywide actions. All of these policies and actions respond to these different emerging needs and also identified by the community. The policies and actions are identified in five different planning systems that are up on the screen, each represented by an image and also in your booklets. Each system is a title that reflects the central goal of that planning system, so strengthening neighborhoods, for instance. In the slides that follow, I'll show you some important metrics that contributed to our policy development, and we highlight the top three priorities for each system. Strengthening neighborhoods. The share of city households burdened by housing costs ranges from 41% in the northwest quadrant to as high as 56% in the southwest quadrant. That is just a stunning statistic. And housing burden means spending more than a third of your income on housing costs. So with that, we have three different focuses of this section of our plan: expand and supply of all kinds of housing. Expand the supply, particularly affordable housing. Improve the quality and safety of existing aging housing stock. And facilitate investments in neighborhoods and key commercial hubs and corridors. Expanding economic opportunity. 52% of city residents have a high school or lower educational attainment level, suggesting the need for workforce training and trades, and I would also add additional education. So one, we hope to provide land use with mixed-use growth and emerging industries and innovation. Two, prepare the workforce and meet employer labor needs. And then third, to promote local businesses and entrepreneurs that reflect the character and makeup of our community. Planning system three contains policies that champion connecting people and places, which is imperative for the city's economic and social fabric. For measuring our travel patterns, we know that approximately 21% of Lancaster city residents also work in the city. More people commute into the city than commute out. That was another interesting statistic that was updated in that recent article in Sunday's paper. So to enhance connections and the associated benefits, our policies aim to do three things: develop more effective transportation facilities and serious... Sorry, develop more effective transportation options to link residents to jobs and other primary destinations. Two, to eliminate transportation fatalities and serious injuries, particularly for the most vulnerable users, like young people and older people. And three, create vibrant public places, spaces, and streets where people want to be. Planning system four is called Growing Greener. And this refers to the goal of becoming a more environmentally sustainable community. One of the statistics that came from our studies was that our tree canopy covers about 22% of land within the city. Between 2014 and 2019, the tree canopy unfortunately declined by 2.5% roughly. And primarily, that was happening on private property. Some of the gains that we saw were actually in the public right-of-way due to the city's street tree planting efforts. So three goals come to mind: to honor and utilize our natural resources wisely. One is to improve water quality in the Conestoga and other nearby waterways. Two, enhance the number and quality of accessible parks, recreation facilities, and open spaces. And three, build resilient public infrastructure that protects the local ecology and mitigates impacts of climate change. Finally, planning system five has a range of policies dedicated to building community and capacity. In other words, fostering happy and healthy city residents. In a city with more single-parent households than the national average, it is definitely notable that approximately 50% of the land in the city is classified as a childcare desert for infants and toddlers. This means there are either not enough facilities, or they are all at capacity. So above all, our policies related to community well-being really aim to, one, advance public health-related air, water, food, and protection from lead and other hazards. Two, to provide high-quality public services, including police, fire, emergency management, library, recreation, waste, social supports. And three, increase community involvement and initiatives that bolster civic participation, pride, and interaction. This has been a key success of the Sarachi administration with the investment in a Department of Neighborhood Engagement, and we've seen great results from that. Going to take just a quick moment to grab my bottle of water, and I'll continue talking. I'll also add that if you didn't get a booklet that includes all of our written policies, which I imagine we may get some questions and discussion going tonight about some of that, they're in the hallway, and you're welcome to grab them. They're on a table just directly across from these doors here. So thanks for hanging in while I covered some of the policy content in the plan. Next to what us planners probably think is really good stuff, some maps and other more specific policies around land use. So one of the key land use facts we felt like was important to mention is that, of course, the city has an Antrak station, and it's the second busiest in Pennsylvania. And a new station area plan was just created in 2023 between the city, Mannheim Township, and the county, which is very exciting for us. And you might have noticed some construction up that way. You can see the investment that's already happening there, and it's important that we guide that appropriately across municipalities. So three key themes came to light through the process here. One is to enact citywide planning systems through land use. So all of those descriptions you just heard, we now need to embody that in land use policy. Number two is to modernize our city planning practices across the board. That means updating codes, ordinances, plans, practices, et cetera, all in concert with the comprehensive plan that we hope will be adopted in October. And then three, catalyze development and strategic locations for community well-being. So before I show you the land use map, want to spend some time just talking about what a future land use map is and what some of these categories are. Future land use map is a visual guide for future planning. It helps determine appropriate locations for land uses that bring together important topics like housing, transportation, natural resources, and economic development. We've developed eight general categories for future land use that are displayed on the screen here. Each land use category allows for a different mix of character and character or uses in buildings. For instance, the residential district is generally characterized by having mostly residential structures, detached structures, and very little commercial. Neighborhood mixed use includes more multifamily housing and more neighborhood commercial amenities. Urban Centers is our densest district with ground-floor commercial and high-density housing. So here's the draft future land use map. There are a few things that may stand out to you here that I'd like to elaborate on. Most of the city's neighborhoods are colored orange. This indicates mixed-use walkable areas with neighborhood-scale commercial amenities. We heard from many residents throughout the process that a neighborhood with small businesses is highly desirable. The downtown area is colored red for urban centers. And this area expands north to include areas around the stadium and also the train station. Like most of our downtown, these areas are envisioned to have a mix of commercial uses on the ground floor with a mix of uses in higher-density residential above. Multimodal transportation is very important for our densest areas. Finally, you may notice that there are areas that are hatched in two different colors: Park City Mall, Burl, Angle Side, and the lower portion of Sunnyside. These are areas that could see a blend of two districts and require further study. I will explain a little bit more on that as we move along here. So we also provided renderings for the three residential districts: residential, neighborhood mixed use, and urban centers. And we did this to emphasize the scale and character of these important neighborhood types, and also how we might see additional development. So the top rendering depicts the residential land use and shows a small-scale multifamily at the corner, adding density to areas where we have space. The middle rendering depicts neighborhood mixed use, and it shows commercial buildings at and near the intersection with attached structures along the block. The bottom rendering depicts urban centers, land use, and shows ground-floor commercial throughout, a mix of building heights, and how we might step back the top floor of a building to add height while respecting the city's historic character. So our second key map is the Economic Development Policy Map. This works in concert with the future land use map. It highlights areas in light red that we expect to undergo land use changes within the next 20 years. These areas require a small area plan or similar analysis. The map also shows a set of commercial Main Street corridors and hubs that closely align with the city's Building on Strength Economic Development Plan. The commercial corridors are the main urban connectors in the city, which are areas intended to have a mix of land uses and include ground-floor commercial throughout. The commercial hubs are distinguished by regional scale in blue, like the downtown and Park City Mall, and by community scale in orange, like Angle Side and the intersection of Duke and Chesapeake. We've designated certain hubs at both the regional and community scales as emerging, which is indicated by concentric circles. And all of these corridors and hubs indicate the desire for targeted investment, with an emphasis on emerging hubs where some activity is already taking place, but more resources are needed. So on to a more unique part of our comprehensive plan. Over the last two years, the planning process has made it clear that the Conestoga River needs to be reimagined. It's an asset to the city and region that is overdue for more attention and investment. So we identified four core priorities for the riverfront. So to start, ecology. We must progress natural conservation and watershed quality efforts. Number two is education. We must provide educational and workforce learning opportunities, related water systems, environmental health, often known as green-collar jobs. Three, recreation. We must develop recreational opportunities that support exercise, enjoyment, earning, tourism, and business growth. And lastly, economic development. We must encourage investment at select areas where mixed-use building is appropriate and beneficial. So let's dig in here. So this is the conceptual map of where we see the greatest opportunity, and we've focused on recreational opportunities and redevelopment sites. So first, you'll notice that there are five key sites that we see as major opportunities, and I'll address those in a moment, but don't lose sight of them. The red lines that extend from those locations are walksheds. They show five-minute and 10-minute walking distances and demonstrate the connectivity our residents already have to the river, and also, in some cases, where it's lacking. We've identified five boat launch locations in several areas where there could be in-river amenities, such as a whitewater course, ropes course, or even swimming. We've also identified the Sunnyside Peninsula as a potential environmental center, where the city already owns 50 acres of land and 20 acres of quarry. Lastly, we depict a continuous river trail for boaters and greenway trails along the river. Much of that already aligned with the Conestoga River Trail that was previously proposed in a plan. So now I'd like to help visualize a little bit more what each of these five sites could look like. Mendali, if you had advanced to the next slide and hit the space bar, I think that should help. So clearly, the city is going through a comprehensive planning process. And after nearly 15,000 engagements and extensive study of the city, we know that the Conestoga River is very important to the city community and the health of our environment. So our comprehensive plan is creating a new vision called the Conestoga Riverfront Reimagined. For more than 100 years, our community has turned its back on the Conestoga River, using it for sewage disposal and dumping, when it was once drinkable and teeming with so many fish that you could nearly walk across the water. Based on community engagement and study of the river, the comprehensive plan will include a vision for how the Conestoga River can be improved for people, the economy, and the environment. We've identified five locations for investment and new facilities that will help revitalize the riverfront. Number one, Conestoga Pines and Walnut Street. An existing city park with a plan already prepared, the community has envisioned forest restoration, two boat launches and a trailhead, a wetland boardwalk, and a multi-use trail that uses an existing bridge connection to an accessible fishing pier. McCaskey High School presents an opportunity... McCaskey High School presents an opportunity for community connection. Number two, Bridgeport. This is an important gateway to the city but sits just outside our boundary. Nonetheless, the city and surrounding municipalities have already worked together to create a plan for a new pedestrian-oriented town center. It would connect to the river by trail and boat launch and complement the community college and connect to the city via King Street. Number three, Sunnyside Peninsula. Once considered for clear-cutting and major development, this place shines most for what it is: a natural beauty in the southeast. Let's encourage environmental design for new buildings. Use the 70-acre lot already owned by the city for a recreation and nature preserve with an environmental center connected by greenways. Can you also imagine the quarry as a water recreation facility? Number four, Lancaster County Park. Of all five locations, the most residents live within a 10-minute walking distance of this one. So, let's enhance those neighborhood connections with better sidewalks, bike paths, and trails and encourage multifamily and commercial development along Duke Street, much of which is already happening. Number five, Angleside. Last but not least, the southern end of the city and a major transportation node. It includes two adjacent townships and includes major reuse opportunities. Let's envision this area as a new commercial district and gateway to the river and Buke-Miller Park to the south. The city is already planning a trail along Water Street, which would arrive at Angleside and could connect to an existing unused pedestrian bridge. Conestoga River is poised to be a centerpiece to economic and cultural identity of Lancaster City and the metro region, so I hope that we can make it happen in part through this comprehensive plan. So, that actually concludes the presentation, at least on the content. I guess I can briefly mention next steps in plan adoption, but I'm happy to answer more questions about this. The first three that are up there, and I apologize, this text is small on the screen. The first three we've taken care of, and that is presenting the draft to the public, posting all of it on the website, and receiving comments for it, and then reviewing and analyzing that feedback from the public. So, tonight is number four. That's our introductory presentation of the Planning Commission and the open house. Our next step is to actually publish the full document online. We're shooting for August 1st and then it'll be reviewed by the Planning Commission on August 2nd. And then we do have another meeting on August 16th for a second discussion, a full discussion if needed. And then we'll be publishing the plan no later than September 1, could be earlier. And that begins a 45-day review period by the school district, Lancaster County Planning Commission, and adjacent municipalities. And then we will be presenting the plan, ideally in October, to City Council with a resolution possibly to be considered at the end of the month on the 24th. So, that's a fast and furious presentation. I know I provided a lot of content to you and thank you for your time and for your attention. And I'm happy to answer any questions from the commission. If you'd like to ask questions about the presentation, maybe we can start there and then if you want to move into any of the policies in the document you have, we can do that too.
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. I was at the event on May 24th. Lot of energy at that event, lot of curiosity. One of the things that I picked up on was how this whole plan is bringing together both arts. It's bringing in pieces to talk about the economy, housing, stuff like that. So, overall, it's just really good for Lancaster City. For me personally, I really liked the Conestoga River Reimagined slide that you showed because I use the mountain bike or the walking trail quite often. So, that area is really good for me, but overall, I'm just enjoying the energy that this plan is bringing to the city and I'm really excited to see what comes of it.
Thank you, Mr. Wicks.
Douglas, I have, yeah, I guess it's a comment and a question. So, I also attended the May 24th event, but I've also served on the Comprehensive Planning Committee in developing all of these things, being a part of that development. I know that I've had questions about these things occurring. So, and in the previous comprehensive plan, there were things that were not, that were in the comprehensive plan but not addressed. Do you know, and I haven't really compared that word for word, do you know of anything that was in that comprehensive plan that wasn't done and is currently in this plan?
That is a good question. You know, a good positive about that plan is actually a lot of content in there was implemented over the years. And I have to the left of me, our former chief planner, Paula Jackson, and our former senior planner, Craig Lenhart, who both helped develop that plan and spent an amazing amount of time and resource and thought in developing it. And thankfully, the city followed through on a number of things. That is a plan I don't have committed to full memory, although I'm sure that the two of these former staff do. But I just wanted to at least offer the starting place of many of the things that came out of that plan actually did move forward, including some changes to our historic districts, changes to street tree regulations, changes to parking regulations and housing as well. And I could go on. I think it was the mixed-use district also developed out of that too and emphasis on building reuse. So, honestly, I think a lot of the changes that we've seen over the last 30 years are due in part to these folks and a lot of others who supported that kind of vision, which did come from very robust community conversation, much like this one has, you know, in many, many living rooms, from what I understand, and sort of small-scale organic interactions. Paula, is there anything else you want to add? I'm happy to, yeah. And just so everybody knows, you know, we are on camera and this is being broadcasted, so I would just ask anyone who speaks this evening, just state your name and speak at the mic.
Thank you, Douglas. I've been retired for four and a half years, so I'm not sure what I remember. But, excuse me, anyway, I wanted to provide an example of, which I have used in the past, how we went from grassroots, we did a lot of living room meetings back in the early 90s. And one of the things we heard a lot, one of the top 10 positives of the city of Lancaster was trees. And so, that went into the comprehensive plan, the importance of trees. And from that, we amended the zoning ordinance and the subdivision of land development ordinance. Prior to the comprehensive plan, the zoning ordinance, which addresses parking and parking lots, had no requirement for internal trees within parking lots. But because of the input we heard from the citizens of Lancaster, we added that as a requirement into the zoning ordinance, which was adopted a couple of years after the adoption of the plan in 1993. The other thing we added to the subdivision of land development ordinance, again amended completely and adopted soon after the 1993 comprehensive plan, was the requirement of street trees. The city subdivision ordinance didn't have that before. And another consideration, there was a loud message that we heard from many of the living rooms where we held these meetings. People were concerned about converting single-family homes to apartments, that they didn't want to lose the opportunity for homeownership. And what we did with the zoning ordinance is to put a threshold of the size of a building for it to be converted to multifamily, two or more units. But that was probably one of the most clear messages we heard throughout the city from the different neighborhoods. They were concerned about, you know, maybe too much conversion to apartments, didn't want to lose the opportunity for homeownership. So, but it was very, we really went from people telling us what they wanted to see in the city, you mentioned neighborhood stories. That was very important. The storefronts was really important. So, we really went from what the people told us, you know, put that as goals and objectives in the plan, and then it ended up in some of our ordinances.
Yeah, thank you. My name is Craig Lenhart. I retired five years ago after spending about 47 years doing what you're doing, doing what Douglas was doing, so that would be presenting subdivision and land development plans to the Planning Commission. In 1903, there was a firm in Philadelphia that laid out a plan for the community of Sunnyside. And that plan included a trolley line and walking trails and 20-foot-wide building lots. And because of redlining and other issues, people couldn't get mortgages to build homes. So, what they built out there, by today's standards, were very substandard. It wasn't until Art Morris became mayor that Sunnyside actually got paved roads and water and sewer. And because they got water and sewer, they were forced to meet the requirements of the building code. And if you didn't meet those requirements, your house got demolished. 150-plus homes were demolished in Sunnyside after it was annexed into the city. About almost 20 years ago, the Youth Intervention Center was built on the prime land in Sunnyside. The county commissioners then talked about, "Let's build a jail." And there was a court case as to whether or not the Youth Intervention Center was to be considered a jail, and that was heard by the zoning hearing board. And they made the decision to allow the Youth Intervention Center to be built. Well, when the city heard that there might be still consideration for a jail, there were discussions, and ultimately, the county commissioners agreed that an RFP, a Request for Proposal, should go out. They would drop their plans for a jail and instead pursue a vision for what could happen to the balance of the Sunnyside Peninsula. There were two main things that were in the way of a successful conversion of that farmland into a community. One was an active quarry. The second was an active shooting range on South Broad Street. Both of those things went away. The quarry has since been taken over by Mother Nature. It is a beautiful lake, something you would be very desirable to build homes along. The Conestoga River remained a greenway. A trolley disappeared, but the flat land that it was on remained. But in the RFP process, a local developer named Community Basics was chosen to build a community. Three times, a marketing study was performed over a period of 12 years. Every time that marketing study came back to say, "Yes, we can build 300 units of residential mixed housing types, detached, semi-detached, row, work-live apartments, perhaps condominiums." When the last plan was being developed, and there were three versions of plans that were created, two things happened. One, the city developed a very strict stormwater ordinance that had huge financial impacts on building that 300-unit development. The second thing that happened, FEMA came out with a new flood study, and it was determined that the 100-year floodplain in Sunnyside has now gone up 42 inches. Well, that affects where you build roads, where you place houses, where you place backyards. Community Basics came to me and said, "We need to save $2 million in this budget." And I worked with the city engineer at the time. We redesigned some roads and came up with a plan that saved that $2 million. And we thought that we had a project. Now, when the county transferred that land to the city, there was also a gift, if you will, of over $100,000 that is currently sitting in escrow. And that $100,000 was to be used to help build that community. And we had looked at different developers coming in. Should it be a Habitat for Humanity-type construction where you have much of the same type of units? Should it be a Stevens College where they are building two homes a year? But again, it's much the same kind of a housing type. And the decision was, no, it should be a mixed-use community with mixes of incomes, mixes of races, et cetera. So, it would look much like the kind of communities that we have throughout Lancaster City. Today, we have a plan that never saw daylight because of financial issues, but it is still a desirable place to build a community, at least in my opinion. You've got about one mile of river frontage on that upper part of the peninsula. If you look at where very expensive homes are built and resold in Lancaster County, they have river frontage. So, we have river frontage, we have essentially quarry slash lake frontage that could support higher-income housing. Sunnyside, when I checked values years ago, had some of the lowest taxable values of any properties in the city. And we always hear as employees of the city, "We need to do something to strengthen our tax base." And Sunnyside was the perfect place to do that. We even looked at a geothermal system, community-wide, for those 300 units that would use the quarry as the water source for that geothermal system. Back then, it was estimated that it could save $200 to $300 per month on your mortgage. You know, you look at with inflation today, that could easily be $600, $700 a month. So, rather than looking at Sunnyside as a future park, and I have nothing against parks, believe me, what was cornfields today has evolved into a mini forest. But the old-growth trees that sit in the floodplain, they are worthy of preservation. And the trail system that is out there and walkable should be improved. Now, when I was a senior planner, I took, I took all of my commission members on a hike through Sunnyside. And I would ask, see if Douglas can do that for you, so he can have really a vision of what you can do out in Sunnyside. Thanks.
Thank you.
I just want to add, maybe it'll clarify some of Craig's comments, is that there was a recommendation in the 1993 plan to build a residential, and that did not happen. So, that is one thing that we can note.
You ready for me, Douglas? All these comments and questions?
I'll do my best.
All right. So, my first one, and I'm just picking a policy that is easy to do this with. So, I'm looking at the homeownership policy and how we want to expand homeownership among low- and moderate-income households for generational wealth.
Do you mind giving me the policy number of the page?
Yeah, page seven, it's the last two parts of that, 1.9.
Great, thank you.
And I think the policy and the action are both good, but what I'm curious about is if we can include metrics to follow along over like the next decade or two decades so that it encourages us to not only revisit the document yearly, but also we're setting a goal and like tracking that progress. Like, I think that we, I shouldn't say we, I know that I want to see a living document and I think metrics, I know it's hard to generate a metric for every single action and policy in here, but I think they would go a long way in making it a living document. And then at some point, we can decide, okay, it's time for comprehensive plan six. We have all this data, we have all this info. So, that's, I guess, more of a comment there. A question, though, is, so, our previous comp plan was intermunicipal and this one's obviously city-focused. When I look especially at the Conestoga the Conestoga Riverfront, how, how can we anticipate engaging other municipalities as well? Because I think that, like, absolutely, the Conestoga River needs some assistance. And it can be a great, almost like water corridor, if you will, for a lot of these municipalities. I mean, I work in one that's surrounded by the little and great Conestoga River. And I know that I personally am very eager to be involved in an effort like that. So what, what can we expect in terms of, like, the city engaging outside of the riverfront that's also just adjacent to its boundary?
Yeah, both, both good points. Regarding the housing metrics question, I'll just, partly, I will direct you to our five-year housing plan that the city has. There are metrics that are identified in there for homeownership and, and other, other metrics there, too. So that remains a guiding document for us, that certainly we're, we're implementing already as, as we're moving towards adoption of this plan. Metrics are important. They are not identified in this plan as it stands right now, but some of that will be developed through our annual work plans and additional effort that would happen after adoption. So very, very good point. Regarding the other municipalities, there are a number of good efforts already underway that we're working on, that serve as starting places. The Bridgeport Plan was, has already been developed. I think that was completed a couple of years ago in concert with East Lampeter and Lancaster Township and the city. That, although Bridgeport is sort of known as more of an intersection or convergence of roads, it actually includes, that study included a much larger area around that and included some portions of riverfront and also identified trail opportunities as well there. So there, there are definitely some good efforts underway. There's more of that that's needed. Angle Side is really the next big multi-municipal effort along the riverfront that we need to prioritize. So that, I imagine, will be, become a short-term or near-term action for us to, to focus on. What we're using in some of these instances as a foundational document is actually our Active Transportation Plan. That was developed by both the city, the intermunicipal committee, which includes all the adjacent, or most of the adjacent townships around the city, and also the county planning agency as well. So what we've done at Bridgeport, some of that's been reflected, is also reflected in the Active Transportation Plan. What we're doing at Angle Side and some of the connections we're making are also shown in that plan. So that's, serves as a really good starting place for us, since those are, that's a document we've all vetted and gone through a public process on. So I hope that's helpful, but definitely I acknowledge there's, there's a need for continued and, and improved coordination with adjacent municipalities. The train station isn't relevant to the river, but of course, that's another recent multi-municipal plan we went through.
I guess this is a weird last question, but it came to mind as you were talking. Do, do you have any anxieties about comp planning? Like, as we get towards the beginning of, the beginning of the end of finalizing this, I don't know how to say that, but as we get towards that point, like, do you, do you have anything on your mind that you're like, we have, we should be mindful of this, or maybe watch out for that?
I appreciate that question. Any anxieties I have is only from, from me really taking this process seriously and wanting to get it right. But I'm not alone in that. That's part of the reason you all are here, and city council, and all of the residents and experts that have, have led up to this moment. I have tested this document a number of times and have gone back and have asked myself, you know, you know, as I've, I've thought about different issues or opportunities in the city, I've gone back to this document and asked myself, is there a policy or an action that addresses that? And in most, in most cases, I have been able to say yes. And in some cases, we have, we've made notes of some, you know, minor changes that we need to make to the, the document that's before you right now. And I think, you know, you all are going to help to, to further that, that process. So I don't know, maybe, maybe not so much anxiety, you know, there's, there's always a good bit of, you know, butterflies as you do these big things, and I think that that's a good and healthy thing. Yeah.
Douglas, may I bring up a question?
Please.
It would probably be on page seven, and it's Policy SNH 16 and 16A. Talk about housing inclusion and innovation. And one of the things I always have been, well, maybe since I've been on Planning Commission, not always, right? Who, who talks about ADUs when they're eight years old? But just the idea that, I think one of the low-hanging fruit things we can do here is discuss how we can use ADUs as a way of really increasing our housing stock, and it might just be a lot easier than some of the other options. What can we do as a planning commission to see this cause maybe championed a little bit?
Yeah. Great, great question, Andrew. And so currently, there's, yeah, there's a policy around housing inclusion, which is looking at innovative housing options and also ones that better need, better meet the needs of multi-generational living and, and others. And then accessory dwelling units is kind of one example of how we might be able to get to some of that. ADUs are challenging for a number of reasons, and I'll just briefly list some of these, but there, there are solutions to some of these challenges. One is always zoning, figuring out the setbacks and block coverage, building coverage. Two is utility access at the rear of the yard. Do there need to be utilities, or can you run them from the house? And there's, there's always capital costs that come with that. And then three, I would say, is really adequate access to the rear of the yard. In some cases, there are common alleys. There may be private alleys. There may be public alleys. All of these have different implications for access, for making necessary improvements to portions of the common alley, which then involve neighbors. And we've gotten into instances where stormwater conveyance needed to be run through the common alley, or instances where they needed to tap into a public water line that was there. So there are a variety of circumstances. But I would say generally, what, what, this is, I'm sort of off the cuff here. These are just ideas. They're not in the plan, right? But to answer your question honestly, I think one approach could be that there are pre-approved ADUs, building, building, building design, where we have several different options of units, maybe that have been vetted by our historic boards as well, and with a stormwater plan of some kind to, to manage those, and really try to streamline that effort so that people can walk in and be able to pull a building permit if they get their zoning approvals for their site from a plan that's already been developed and approved by the city.
Would that be like a catalog or something that uses, like, Art GIS where you can overlap these areas for these buildings? Would it look like that possibly, or is that just going too far ahead?
That might be going a step further than, than I would. But, yeah, I mean, they would be building plan rolls here at the city, but without, they would have to be applied to a lot to figure out how that works. And we would need people who could invest and build the homes. And, you know, that's the, the biggest challenge is, you know, what would that actually cost? But I think that there are ways that that, that process could be streamlined. You know, there's a lot more conversation that has to happen around that. But do really appreciate the question. And, you know, Lancaster is fortunate to have a lot of buildings that can be converted and have been over the years, you know, carriage houses and garages and small industrial buildings that have already been reutilized. So.
Sure.
Douglas, one more point. So, and kind of to that point, considering the homelessness and housing security, how are, and this is more for the audience, maybe watching virtually, how will we prioritize these issues, especially those that are pressing, like the ones just mentioned, housing security? To what extent are we going to go, not only how are we prioritizing that, but to what extent are we going to go to, to kind of fix these issues?
Yeah. It's, it's such an important issue. This is one that is unfortunately a reflection of, of a national, you know, surge in homelessness for, for a variety of reasons, and definitely has to be addressed. This is an issue that is hard for the city alone to, to address, certainly with, with just its resources. But homelessness often, it might be, it might, might initiate in a different municipality, right? And it may become a problem of the cities because of the services that are here. You know, we end up with a larger share of that population for a variety of reasons. And, you know, I think it really needs to be a, a cooperation. The, you know, the homelessness coalition is really the entity that is bringing partners together to address that alongside county agencies as, as well. The city did allocate some of its ARPA funding that it got from the federal government towards emergency bed capacity, and we have an agreement with the redevelopment authority to actually expand that emergency bed capacity by the end of the year. So it is, it's been a priority of the Sriracha administration to do that. One of the, the actions that we, we have in here, aside from, you know, continuing to partner and grow our capacity, is to revisit regulations around extremely low-income housing. The, the title, this is one of the changes that we'll, we'll make. But regulation of extremely low housing sounds like, like we're trying to limit it. But if you read the text, what we're actually hoping to do is revisit the zoning definitions and approval processes to further support extremely low-income housing and make sure that we're providing for it appropriately throughout the whole city. So that is one thing that is, is a short term. We, we think it will be a short-term item for us to, to do. And, you know, there's a lot more conversation to have around that, Maxine, but I hope that partly addresses your question. I, I'm also a big advocate for Housing First Solutions. You know, that has, has not happened in the city yet, but I've visited other Housing First developments, and there's one notable one in Detroit at an old Bell Telephone Building. Folks can walk in, and if there's room available, they have a room, no questions asked. Then services are wrapped into a building like that where you can, you have job connections, you have job training, counseling, and addiction services and things of that sort. And I think a lot of experts in that field, you know, really believe that that is a, a good solution for those sorts of issues, to really address the systemic issues around housing and not just the, the housing itself.
Douglas?
Over here.
I have a, a comment and two questions. I'm on page fifteen, Expending Mobility Options and Access. I was really excited to read this section and was really happy to see the comp plan addressing really the full range of mobility options that need to be improved and addressed in order to achieve a lot of the larger goals, everything from climate to equity, including everything from bicycle infrastructure, pedestrian infrastructure, transit, really painting the whole picture. So I think, in my view, the plan gets really high marks for that. My two questions are regarding, you know, working with RTAs on policies like transit service quality, that's CPP 1.4 and transit circulation around the city. What is the city's current working relationship with RT, and I guess by extension, SCTA? And does the comp plan envision that changing, if it form at all, and to achieve some of those transit-related goals?
Yeah, great question. So the Planning Bureau has been coordinating with RTA on evaluating land development plans. That was actually a change that we made in the last year, actually. We had had sporadic conversations with them about developments that were popping up and, of course, you know, getting good questions from Mr. Dastra about, you know, bus stops and how plans were being integrated into the bus network and wanting to see more of that ourselves. You know, we started to actually send plans to RTA for comment and review. So that has been, I think, a really beneficial working relationship and also gives them a heads-up on high-density developments that are coming in that they might want to consider serving or adjusting schedules for. In addition to that, we have been, I, I've been one of the representatives, a part of their, their new transit plan that they're working on. So city staff remain involved from, in a planning capacity. So there, that's still in progress. In addition, beyond that, I, we do have, there are other conversations at bay around how we can partner on additional transit services. One that, you know, this is very much in the works, but the, the very next action actually is CPP 1.5A, Micro Transit Pilot. We do identify RTA as a potential partner there. In fact, it may even be something that they choose to take on. But, but really, micro transit is, this would be a service that is from point-to-point location, much like Uber or Lyft, but other communities have made that a publicly subsidized service where there's, you know, more affordable fees. And I think that that would be a great opportunity to address first- and last-mile trips and certainly hope that partnership with RTA there would, would occur and be fruitful.
Great, thank you. My other question centered on CPP 1.8, reducing vehicle miles traveled, which I was really excited to see that, because I don't think a lot of plans directly address that. Actually trying to say, we want to, we recognize the impact that, exclusively relying on, on private automobiles, the impact that that can have on quality of life and climate. So kind of similar to what Tony was getting at earlier, are there any plans of how to track that, to mark improvement on, on working towards that goal?
Yeah. At, at the moment, we don't, I, I'm not aware of that being a, a metric that we regularly track. We have, we did do that for the purposes of the Climate Action Plan. We use PENDOT data on city roads to, to figure out those vehicle miles traveled and, and then looked at that in terms of carbon emissions. And then for local roads, we were having to sort of estimate that because PENDOT doesn't report on a lot of our, our more local roads. So I, I would say that that is definitely a metric that, that would be useful to track. We currently also have access to Streetlight data, which also gives us some information on, on vehicle miles traveled in the city by using mobile devices that are in people's cars. And all of that data goes into the cloud and eventually gets scrubbed of your personal data. And then organizations like Streetlight and others use that, that movement data to actually develop models around transportation. So Streetlight is a service that we have and we, we've used as part of the comprehensive planning process. But services like that are certainly available to us to, to look at that more closely. I'll make a, a note here that that, that's another potential, you know, metric that could be looked at alongside this plan.
Thank you.
This is a little bit more of a meta-question, but I know when you showed all of the old comprehensive plans, it was, you know, thirty years between them. What is the plan to share back the progress or what's happened on the plan that put out? Because each individual policy, really excited about. But like, how, how will you share with the community what's been done, or what, if hasn't been done, why? Because things might change.
Yeah. No, that's, that's a great question. So this document that we have here doesn't reflect a lot of, it doesn't have the, a lot of the narrative that will be in the plan. And one of the chapters in the plan will, will be on implementation, which will sketch out what that looks like. And since we are at the tail end of, of writing that, I, I can at the very least say that developing an annual work plan is a part of the implementation of this plan. Those annual work plans do need to be matched with resources at city council. So we, we are working through the process of what this looks like, what kinds of tools do we actually need internally to evaluate budgets alongside the priorities that are within this plan, and how do we adequately resource them? So it's very exciting that we're at that point where we're grappling with these questions. I think that is a, a good sign, you know, that we're taking this plan very seriously and plan to institutionalize it in, in a, in that way. Those annual work plans will be based on an action table that you'll, you'll see at the next meeting, and we identify things that are short, mid, and long-term. The annual work plan would be a little bit more specific to say what would be upcoming in the very next year and whether some of those actions or priorities, some of those actions would become a high priority for the administration. And then, you know, of course, I would receive more funding resources, staff time from the city. So I think that reporting mechanism and update to the community is probably the, the clearest and best way that we can be reporting our progress. And I'll also note that a lot, some of the actions and policies in here are actually very much underway. You know, there's definitely some reach goals in here, I'll say, and things that we haven't started at all. But then- started at all, but then there are some others that are, you know, we have funding for but maybe haven't done yet or are on the near docket. And so that's very, very exciting. I think this has served as an opportunity to help communicate the full body of our work to the residents of the city.
You ready for round two?
Do we have another planning commissioner?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Yeah, I just want to start with just kudos to you, Douglas, and the staff. I mean, I think you guys did a really tremendous job. When you get people excited about comprehensive planning, like, I think you've done your work, so congratulations on that. I guess, two questions. One, as I was kind of reading through the draft, I was thinking about the fact that some of these policy, these draft policies are somewhat in competition with each other, particularly, you know, as an example, thinking about, you know, wanting more affordable housing and also, you know, wanting to do historic preservation and preserve the character, the building character here in Lancaster. So I'm just wondering how you think about those things that are in competition and then how we, as a planning commission, should be thinking about those things?
I'll start with that question.
Does it get easier from here?
Yes.
It's a really good question. I think, you know, naturally, there's push and pull in every decision that we make and that the commission makes. You know, a great example, a recent example that's still notable is our decisions around short-term rentals. You know, the city wants to be a place where we are accommodating of tourists, tourism, but we also need to make sure it's happening in the right places and need to be protective over housing. And we also want to be entrepreneurial, and short-term rentals have been a form of entrepreneurship for people in the city. So that's just one example where, you know, we did a lot of careful thinking and discussion here with this commission and tried to arrive at the best solution that we could. And the good thing that I think you and City Council did is you went back for a second bite at the apple and you adjusted those regulations further, you know, recently this year to expand actually in the favor of short-term rentals in certain areas. So I offer that as an example because, you know, all of this work is iterative in the end, and if we don't get it perfect on the first try and we've done our best, you know, then I think, you know, taking another shot at things is a good thing. So you're right, some of these things are competing with each other and will take some really careful consideration. And I don't have the perfect answer for that. The historic preservation one is the trickiest in the harbor. That's where I've heard, you know, the most conversation around people not, you know, maybe not being able to afford certain materials for their homes. And, you know, that's really a question that Council, City Council wrestles with right now when it comes up. But I do think that those pinch points are areas that deserve a closer look, more conversation, and, you know, some analysis to figure out whether we struck the right balance or not. So I'm sorry, I don't have a better answer than that, but it's a good thing for us, I think, to keep in mind on an ongoing basis.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. And then, second question, so looking at the draft land use map, I was kind of curious, you know, I think we've seen kind of downtown migrating south of King Street, you know, with the convention center and then Southern Market and with the mosaic coming in and the new museum. I was just kind of curious around the thinking of, should the downtown urban center move south, thinking over the next 20 years? You know, it seems like we're kind of limiting ourselves to the basic current downtown, although, you know, we have expanded it to the north, so I was just curious about the thinking behind that.
Yeah, it's a good point, too. There's some minor expansion to the south, given our current central business district boundaries or the boundaries of our central business districts. And I think that is, you know, worth taking another look at and just, you know, asking that question. There's, I think, similar questions about the urban fabric south as there are north. In the north, currently at least, there's more development opportunity. However, there are portions that are included there, especially on the, it would be the east side of Prince Street, where there are, you know, two-and-a-half-story row homes that are in there. And, you know, we note in the definition here that there could be a, you know, mix of, you know, different buildings and heights, et cetera, as there are in the downtown. So, yeah, I think that's a worthy question. I can certainly take another look at that, Amos. And of course, if there are any specific locations you wanted to further explore, happy to do that, too.
All right, now you ready? Over here. So, actually, this is, I'm going to bounce off you kind of a little bit with the expansion of the downtown. And this might be a wild ride, I'm sorry, you know how I get. So I was walking through the forest the other day, right? And I like paralleling urban development to biology because I think that the squareness of cities is to our detriment. And as I'm walking, I realize, like, you know, you have a massive tree. Like, one massive tree doesn't make an ecosystem. And in the same way, one massive building doesn't necessarily equate to creating an account, it's a small, I mean, it's a small ecosystem, it's a small economy, but if the tree or something in the building goes wrong, everything around it falls apart because there's no stability of that versus, you know, walking through a forest. You know, two big trees aren't necessarily always side by side, they space out, but they fill the area in different ways to allow for understory and then shrubs and then ground cover, so on and so forth. Expanding downtown is interesting, especially southward, because it seems to be going that direction. But I also think more urban centers, like the plan the drafts have already identified is especially important, too. And I want to expand on that by saying, you know, we throughout the country have a housing supply issue, and it's my view that that's because of exclusionary zoning that prevents upward building. Like, everything's going flat, it's not going up, there's no dimension, there's no understory to the trees, it's just shrubs. It would be interesting to fathom, because we're already built out, it would be interesting to fathom an urban growth boundary that goes up where people can exact and change over time how tall an area might be to maybe encourage different development or taller development in specific areas to spur that sort of growth. And I think I'm about to keep on rambling if I don't stop myself. I think I got the gist out of what I was trying to say. It's like, we're built out, I think urban growth boundary is up, and the ability to trade those credits depending on the situation and the point in time would be interesting. I guess that was more of a ramble and a comment to build off Amos's point.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Dastra. And it sounds like, you know, really what you're advocating for is more opportunity for height throughout the city.
Yeah.
If I, I hope I haven't mistaken your comments. I just want to note that in the renderings that we saw earlier on, in the mixed-use district, we, none of this is hard and fast, but there are buildings in the five-story range that are depicted in that neighborhood. Mendel, do you mind actually going back to that slide with the renderings? I want to make sure I'm not misspeaking. Oh, yeah, it's the next slide from where you were. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, so this is a, yeah, there's a five-story building, stepped in the rear, has a rear building on the back of it, the corner and the orange drawing, and you can see there's a large remastering also showing to the far right in that rendering. Keep in mind that this is your average row home community in the city that's really being depicted here and most of the neighborhoods we're familiar with. So certainly, there is, there is vertical expansion that's being suggested in these drawings. You know, these are not zoning codes, these are not enforceable, but they will guide land use decisions and zoning decisions from here on. So I just wanted to remind us of that sense of scale that we're currently conceptualizing across the full city, and, you know, a lot of these neighborhoods have two-and-a-half-story homes in them right now. So certainly, something like this, you know, would permit quite a bit of vertical expansion in neighborhoods that don't have that kind of scale at this time.
And then this is my second, I think this is the last thing I have for this meeting, I apologize, everybody. I'm just curious, not just how you, Mr. Smith, but how us as a commission view condo ownership in the context of homeownership, because I worked for a property developer briefly, and my understanding and experience is that you build condos in order to get a quick return as opposed to a return over time. And also, there's an impression that condos are exclusively for wealthy individuals. I'm just curious how y'all feel about condo ownership, because, you know, as buildings become taller and more collective in nature, homeownership will get harder in an environment with few single-family homes. So, yeah, that's kind of my starting point, if anybody has any comments on condo ownership as an aspect of homeownership.
Okay, I'll just say that we should allow for a public comment period, but allow for Mr. Lenhart to comment here.
So from, a step down from condo would be a homeowners association, and I've had a lot of experience in that with the city. And I would say there is probably less than a 50% success rate with the Good Home Ownership Association when you're dealing with the poorer people. Because when it comes to paying that assessment for the light that gives them protection at night, they don't want to pay the light bill. So you just have to think about that.
Mr. Leonard, I have a question for you, Mr. Leonard. I have a question. You mentioned, this kind of goes back to Sunnyside?
Yes.
In 1903?
Yes.
When they first kind of took a look at that area. So it appears, that was 120 years ago, it appears as though the city had been kind of wrestling with areas like Sunnyside and connected to affordable housing for quite some time. That's just kind of a comment. But this, what I wanted to ask you about is, it was noted that 150 houses were considered to be blighted? What year was that?
That would have been from, probably starting around 1968 forward to about eight years after the Morris administration?
Okay.
Because when that was annexed to the city, and that might have been 68, Sunnyside was annexed into the city as we expanded west, eastward in the Conestoga Gardens and Fairfield Acres. And the only reason that was annexed was because the residents of West Lane Peter Township were up in arms because Mr. Grimm had converted trolley boxcars to housing units in Sunnyside. And the residents of Sunnyside wanted a resolution, and that resolution was to try to impose housing code standards to get rid of that problem.
So then, when, I did want to ask the question, you said former mayor Art Morris, he put water and sewer?
Water, sewer, and paved streets.
And paved, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, and so then that was part of the reason why the homes were considered to be blighted?
Well, the homes would have wells and septic systems.
Okay.
At best. A lot of homes didn't even have septic, they just had an outhouse.
Right. Yeah, I remember them days. Thank you.
Glad Mr. Dastra brought up this point. It might be helpful at some point, today's paper had Jose Lopez, who's now the CEO of SACCA, and Jose served on the planning commission for about 10 years. So, I mean, he has some background of being, you know, one of you some years ago. SACCA, as you know, has been homeownership choice program, actually, Jose was part of the brainchild. The origin of that began when Jose was still with SACCA. And the Spanish-American Civic Association is promoting the idea of homeownership, where the people have their own lot, it's not a homeownership, I don't know if they do that, but they have their own yard. I think before we think of condo as the way to go or high-density apartments, you know, is there a desire among the community, you know, to still have a single-family home where you have a yard and your own private space? And that's, you know, because I've always lived in a row home myself in the city. I think it's important to have that balance, that you still have the opportunity for someone owning where they live and have the land that they live on, too, but rather just go the other way to high-density apartments and condos, to have that balance.
I have a question.
Yeah.
The plan that you're mentioning that was the brainchild of Jose Lopez?
Yes.
Is that something that came out of a prior comprehensive plan or the southeast?
Well, you'd have to ask Jose that. It was during the Smith-Gall administration and Matt Parado worked in city government at the time, and Matt and Jose were very much working together to come up with this concept to create new homeownership opportunities. Plum Street, you know, I think North Street, you know, where the Elks is, now Chesapeake Street, all those are single-family attached homes. And I think he was, he was in the paper recently with the newer homes off of Chesapeake behind him. So I think it'd be good to, you know, get his input on the importance of homeownership. And do we want to continue to have that opportunity in the city?
Mr. Dastra, I think to your point, if I'm interpreting your question correctly, you're really inquiring about different forms of ownership. And I think that we could go back to that policy and consider that question, maybe not just from a condo perspective, but there are other forms of ownership, like cooperative ownership. There are many successful co-op housing models in the country where people actually own a part of, they own a share of that entity and that building. So, yeah, let me look at that policy a little bit more and see if we might be able to just reflect that there are other forms of ownership that could be considered as well. Okay, I appreciate that very much.
Sorry, I have one more, I think somewhat related question. Douglas, I know, so Ms. Jackson had mentioned in the previous comp plan that one of the things they did was prohibit the, you know, like splitting up houses, single-family houses into multi-units. I don't see anything, I don't see that addressed at all in this plan, and I'm kind of, I'm curious, given our, you know, old, large housing stock and, you know, you noting that there's a lot smaller families, a lot of like, single people looking for homes, wondering what, yeah, what came out in the planning process or the conversations that you've had about a desire to do that or not a desire to do that?
Yeah, excellent question, Amos, and this is a deep topic and one for, I think, this commission and others to grapple with. One of the last things that Ms. Jackson did in our code before she left her post was actually reduce that square footage requirement to allow for the conversion of some smaller-sized buildings, seeing, I think, the need for additional housing in the city and specifically for rental. and specifically for rentals. And of course, we're, that need has only grown and increased in severity. And as you've probably heard me say before, our housing studies have shown that there's certainly high demand in single-family households, the census is now demonstrating that to us as well. And additionally, what these housing studies have shown is that there's a mismatch in the number of people living in these large historic row homes and family, oh, sorry, the number of bedrooms they have and the family size. So in other words, there's untapped housing that's there that could be serving the community. This plan in its current form does not explicitly address the topic of dividing houses. That would definitely be a question that we would, if not grapple with here, certainly in a zoning rewrite. The, that regulation that I mentioned, that Ms. Jackson had had a hand and worked with me also in changing with the Commission, has remained unchanged since then. And in my tenure as planner at the city, I have not heard a lot of concern about that, that's just anecdotal, not to say that that represents the perspective of the city. But, yeah, I would say that that's an important question to grapple with. Any other questions from the Commission? I'd also love to give the opportunity for any public to comment as well.
Number six, other business.
I have no other businesses, Mr. Chairman.
None?
Mr. Chairman, I'll just reiterate what I said earlier, is that two weeks from now, on August 2nd, we'll plan to have part two of this discussion and we'll share that draft plan and its full with you as soon as I have it. Right now, we're shooting to have it to you on August 1st, which doesn't allow you a lot of time. But if I have a draft that I can share sooner, I will, I will do that just for your reading. We're really, you know, working as quickly as we can and up against the clock to produce this plan. That said, you know, many of the policies in here stand unchanged, so in terms of policy content and maps, this is your go-to place. But I'll continue to record these comments and, you know, go back to the document each time and report back. So, thank you very much for all your thoughtful questions, I really, really appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate presentation. Any other public comment? Hearing none? Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
You have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Pose, eyes have it, meeting completed.